All right, we are gearing up for YouTube as we speak. All right, we are live on YouTube and or streaming on YouTube and the Zoom.
Okay, I hereby call to order the Ruckbridge Planning Commission meeting that was continued from April 10th, 2024. We are going to be discussing the land use chapter.
Yes, and I have not heard, everyone's in attendance except for Mr. Whitmore. I have not heard from him, so it may maybe anticipating him shortly. As you know, the county, the Office Community Development staff has been working on the updating the comprehensive plan. Our current goal or essentially deadline is August 1st. And that's due to the fact that the we have a couple of smart scale applications pending. The the preliminary applications are due on April 1st, we made that deadline. And it's it's always best if the projects are supported by the comprehensive plan and the projects we're talking about. With the smart scale, of course, the Route 11 pedestrian improvements that we've talked about in the past. And then the improvement to the Chick-fil-A, I'm sorry, the greenhouse Econo Lane intersection there on Route 11. So we're on fairly firm deadline. As reported previously, the Zach Beard with the Central Shandover Planning District Commission has been working on the Transportation Chapter. Been in fairly well communication with him in the recent weeks. He did join us with the Office Community Development Committee last time, gave us an overview. Community Development Committee, I should say, gave us an overview of what they have been working on. And really, the purpose of this continued meeting was to look at the mapping and language. Hopefully, by now y'all are familiar with the, you know, the language in the current comprehensive plan or the land use chapter. But really, we started looking at the mapping, staff started looking at the mapping with the GIS department. Started making some decisions here and there. Or attempting to talk about the the mapping issues here and there. And just felt it would be beneficial to have prior to instructing the GIS department make some modifications. Just have a discussion with y'all to make sure we're on the same page. You know, as far as what y'all would like to recommend as as far as some land use changes. I'm sorry, mapping associated with land use chapter. So going in hierarchy essentially with that, I'll turn the floor back over to Chair, see if anybody anybody has anything to add. Okay, let me let me start by sharing my screen so everyone can see it. And what we've done is essentially dummy down the GIS. We have all the layers in here. I don't think I could get my hands on the institutional overlay or institutional zone, but we can, we can work with that. The major layers that we're going to talk about today are, of course, the suburban service area. The rural villages and the rural village area, and then also some discussion on the interstate interchanges. So without further to do, I'll just dive right in to, you know, we'll start with the hierarchy of the suburban service areas. Of course, the suburban service areas are currently marked around, located around the city of Lexington, city of Buena Vista, Glasgow, and Goshen. Page 242 is the actual map, and I can switch back and forth. We'll start with Lexington, if you will. This is the Lexington area with the suburban service area. And the ones that the the ideas that essentially staff had was was to essentially, some of, some of them adding to the area, some of subtracting to the area. With that being said, we can start, however y'all like to start, we can start in the north part of the area. Currently shown on the map, the yellow is the current suburban service area. And so what I've done is made that 30% transparency, so you can still see the road network underneath of it. I'm gonna go ahead and turn off, turn off the interstate interchange here. Interstate overlays, I should say. And so what staff was thinking here is twofold, is one, turning on the existing zoning, the agricultural transitional. In most cases, the agricultural transitional zone follows, or the suburban service area follows the transitional zone. Sometimes it doesn't, that's what I'd like to talk to you all about. So with that being said, one, one area that does does not follow it is this area on the intersection of 81 and 64. So we do know some of these properties are under easement, I have an easement layer if needed. But one suggestion that staff essentially has was to to fill in the suburban service area. You know, within following the line of the transitional zone in this area. So the yellow would be included or increased in the area along this intersection or this this area here. So I just wanted to, this is sort of the point of this, is just to throw it up on the map, talk about it, pros and cons, what y'all are thinking.
I think for me, first of all, is what does that mean suburban service area? I mean, how is that going to change what we're allowing to happen in that area?
So the suburban service area is is chatted about, it's the first one on page 239. Land use. So suburban service areas are defined as areas bordering corporate cities, towns already characterized by existing development. As well as undevelopment properties with access to sound transportation links, public services, and relatively strong growth pressures. They may contain commercial corridors that would fall under the corridor overlay district to promote quality development. Mixed residential, commercial, and industrial uses should be promoted in these areas. Projects with more intensive uses would be required to buffer their activity from adjoining from less intensive uses. It's desirable to encourage neighborhood development where residents can be brought closer and closer to providers of employment and goods and services. Walking and biking should be promoted to reduce dependencies on automobiles. New projects within the service service areas would be required to connect to public water and public sewer.
Chris, is that area, the yellow area taxed any differently than?
It is not, to back up a little bit, you know, there's no, there, it is not to answer your question, there, there's no hierarchy. You know, the tax is based on the, the, every six years, the the assessment. With that being said, the 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 document we're talking about is somewhat of a philosophical document as far as the land use chapter. It it does, it it has a lot of, the teeth come into play when it's substantial compliance with the, well, not substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan, essentially.
Is that the property like where the hotel is currently at, or?
No hotel, good question, the hotel, the hotel development is already within the suburban service area. And that is going to be located, the the new True Hotel, for example, is going to be located right here, if you can see my cursor. That's, that's the new, this is going to be the Chick-fil-A, the Dunkin', and then that is the hotel we're talking about there. So that's well within the the current suburban service area and more particularly business area.
Well, one of my worries about that is I I drive down that road quite a bit, going to the ponds and and out to 11 there. I mean, that's a big farm, I mean, it's a really nice big farm right there, you know, I don't, I don't know if we want to call that a suburban service area and open that up to that.
It is, it is obviously a close proximity to, well, it's on the intersection of 64 and 81, close proximity to Route 11 and and close proximity to public water and public sewer. You know, one thing that that we've always, you know, somewhat struggled with is is talk about easements in the area. I would like to put some, some language, I would like to increase the language on support or lack of support essentially with conservation easements in this area, because one, one we always fall back on is the Showalter Track. We we all love easements, they're an appropriate area, but the, and I think I have that layer.
And where's that?
The Showalter Track is directly across the street from Devil's Back though. That's under a permanent conservation easement shown here, so these two tracks here. You know, that, that's always been a nice farm, it's always a pretty farm on Route 11, however.
And they rent the land, the next farm over, right, or the land from the next farm, don't they?
You mean south?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm uncertain on that one, I, I'm uncertain.
Okay.
But obviously, you know, in hindsight, if you're talking about future growth patterns, 15, 20 years out. Available to right on side of Route 11, four lane, you know, four lane highway, public water and public sewer in the close proximity. You know, that, that, that could have been, you know, and I respect your comment of it's a nice farm, but we have to start, we, we have to, we have to look forward and say, okay, well, where are we going to preserve this farmland? And where is some farmland that could be higher or more intensive use? Knowing that these two are obviously essentially all at the table because of the easement.
And where is the ponds in relation to that, it's further down this way? Okay, so it's still outside of that?
Well, it's within the suburban service area, but this is the area I was talking about here.
Right. Okay, I got you.
Another one, just to, but not to, not to skip around one y'all, obviously, the suburban service area stops at this, on the west side. Excuse me, east side of the interstate here, another suggestion that staff has essentially is is go across the interstate and incorporate some of this existing business zone and the transitional zone there as a suburban service area.
Is that to connect to BV?
No, that, that is going to, this is, this is North Lee Highway, this is the Timber Ridge area.
Okay.
And that's already zoned business?
Some of its own business, some of its own transitional, yes. So one suggestion that we had was to, you know, incorporate this area in the suburban service area. And then going back to this area in the suburban service area for these two, two, two points.
Go on down just a little bit, under Old Buena Vista Road, that's also, is that another area that you're looking at?
Not necessarily, I mean, the the access, well, one, it's, it's, the Riverbend subdivision is there, Riverbend subdivision is here. That's obviously historic, single-family neighborhoods on relatively large lots. I'm not foreseeing any redevelopment of that property. As you get a little bit over this way, essentially, the, it's challenging to to get off the public highway onto the private property for for residential or commercial purposes.
What about near Flower Lane though, isn't that over where the quarry is back that way?
Old Quarry located here, Old Quarry located here, the active quarry is located here. And then Flower Lane essentially dead ends to the Dodd property, I believe. Talking about, I'm gonna turn off the suburban area, that's the existing zoning. Of course, existing zoning, pink is agricultural transitional, yellow is residential, the dark red is business, and the the gray is industrial. So that's how it currently follows that area.
When you change that, if we change that, then does that changes the uses that are appropriate or would be coming before us, or?
No, this does not have, this does not have any direct, this does not have a, this exercise here does not change the permitted uses nor the uses by special exception in the underlying zoning districts.
Somebody could point to that and say, hey, you know, you guys said this was, you know, a perfect area to expand and grow business, so I'm trying to bring a business here, right?
It would, it would essentially be supported by the comprehensive plan in some cases, yes. So I guess, starting with the easier one of the two, maybe, do we all, is there consensus with the planning commission that we extend the suburban service area across the interstate here to incorporate some of this property?
I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah, Lehigh is gonna be in this area here, yes.
Between Lehigh and Howard Johnsons.
Yep, and so the Howard Johnsons, zooming down, this is gonna be Maple Hall. This is all gonna be the Howard Johnsons and the the Quality Inn, I think, Days Inn, all gonna be in this area there. Burgie's Lane being there, Lehigh.
I have no problem.
I don't have a problem with that.
I'm okay with that one, yep.
All right, so what's our thoughts on the infill of this area here?
Given that so much of it's under easement, of this type of commitment.
Well, and, and, yeah. And I think easements do have some, you know, I'm not saying it's a start stop point type thing, you know, for for expanding these districts. But obviously, it has more influence than the zoning nor, or the comprehensive plan, essentially. But also knowing that as far as, this is an older layer, but I'm confident that it's still, still, still active, if you will, in this area, I should say. So, you know, there, there's a large swath of land here and here that's not under easement.
So this is somewhat my unfamiliar, I could say that with the area, but seems to me that area with any bit of development is going to cause a real trickle down of people not being desirous of living there. Is that, it's not, not, that's my observation.
Well, it talks about, you know, the suburban service area is a very philosophical document, so it talks about, but it talks about, you know, commercial and residential development in the suburban service area. Mixed residential, commercial, and industrial uses should be promoted in these areas as far as the the quote from the land use chapter pertaining to suburban service areas.
I mean, it seems to me that it's going to discourage any residential development as soon as we go that down that route. I mean, I'm not against that, it just seems that, you know, it's nice saying mixed, would that mean apartments? Somebody wanted to come in and build a 36-unit apartments, you know, at market?
You have to consider the underlying zoning, what's permitted in the underlying zoning.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, because, you know, the the agricultural transitional zone has language associated with it that states in the zoning ordinance, I should say, that it is also intended to maintain the current allowable density for development and may serve as a transitional zone where a rezoning to more intensive districts, districts may be considered.
I have a question about, so if we did this, would that discourage somebody from coming in and putting in a big solar farm? Because that's not in our comprehensive plan, if we're gonna call that suburban, whatever the the term is, suburban service area. We're trying to get infill, we're trying to make it a more high-use area, seems like that would discourage somebody from coming in and trying to put in a solar.
I, I, not necessarily, I mean, I will say, we, we, we have a pending solar application in this area. It's on the Huffman property, it's probably a 30-acre project on, but the Huffman's own, I'm spitballing here, 180 acres, you know what I mean? And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, and to be clear, that project is on call, fall under the current comprehensive plan, not the proposed comprehensive plan that we're talking about.
I just don't want to see that all turn into, you know, like, if that helps it so that we actually get houses and businesses and things like that, that's one thing versus just turn it over to become a big 180-acre solar farm.
The other part of the, the other flip of the coin is obviously, if it's not in the suburban service area in this area, it's under a rural area. And I do think it's somewhat of a fallacy that you have this, that that we currently have this tract of land, which I gave, give you the exact acreage, essentially, this tract of land here, this is multiple small tracts. But this tract of land fairly close to public water and public sewer on Route 11 as a rural area.
Yeah, right, pretty much anything right off of Route 11, it's not really rural.
In some cases, that's corrected, in some cases, as you know, as looking at our transitional zone elsewhere, it stops where it's forced main, you know, so, so looking at our transitional zone. And in some cases, in some cases, the other ones we're gonna get to with the rural village area, the village areas, you know, it, they're not all, because it's Route 11, not part of rural area. But that has to do with where it's forced main, and it's not easily accessible, it being the sewer, I should say.
Right. Hoffman Lane over there, one of the other areas that you're looking at, expanding it out, just to finish out that full area?
Well, that could go either way, I mean, one, the one it somewhat follows existing zoning, this is the Horse Center property, the Oak, Oak Hill Farm, I think it is, or I can't remember the exact term. But this is the Horse Center property, so, so some of the Horse Centers in the rural area, the majority of the Horse Center properties in the rural area.
That's not one you're looking at changing, making any change to?
It's, I'm just here to guide the discussion.
But you guys are, I mean, you've been studying this, you've.
Yeah, no, but the staff proposal was not to, in fact, you know, you, you could see the the latest rezoning here. You know, we, we were not planning to put the Horse Center property holdings, I should say, in the suburban service area.
Chris, going back and reading the suburban service area suggested uses, I think what you're proposing does meet that definition. That corridor as infill would be, if we're trying to preserve the whole county, that is kind of one of the better spots to be, be developed, gotta open it up a little bit. If you read that definition, I think it's what you're trying to do, it fits. Already characterized by existing development as well as undeveloped properties with access to sound transportation links, public services, relatively strong growth pressures.
I mean, I guess if we have to pick a place to do it, that's, that makes some sense. I'd find some place, right?
Yeah, that's the rural left corridor. You guys.
Definitely have to do some work on the, you know, like, if you're really doing something with that, you know, it's pretty curvy.
Adam, what do you think, you drive by there every single day?
I mean, it, I agree with you, it does fit description of what you're saying, but, I mean, I didn't, I mean, with the, having a easement in place, I don't know.
A portion, kind of.
Yeah, it's just kind of, I'm on the fence on it, because it's one of those things that, yeah, it's easement in place, you're having to separate and subdivide it between three tracks. And are they renting that other track that we were, what we were done?
You talking about this area here?
I'm talking about that back quarter, right there, yeah.
And and if someone come to me and say, hey, you know, I'm gonna do a, a business development, you know, I would not be discouraging, I will say that. In fact, you know, I'll, I'll go one further and say, I honestly essentially wish we had the tools to prohibit an easement in some of these areas at the time. And I think that's just good planning, not, not because of the landowner's desires or, you know, long-term farming, anything like that. But just as far as where you, where you would see higher, more intensive uses in agricultural property, I, I think that would be a prime. This area is, is, has a lot of merit, let's put it that way.
And I get that, so.
Freak it, so everybody's thinking here?
That's a good thing.
Yeah. I think for me, just knowing that there's still the underlay, you know, the other, what, what you said about Viva Cub, what, what is it zoned underneath as AT, right?
AT, yes.
I mean, you still got that, you know, the backup, you know, so it's still gotta come to us with any projects, right? I mean, it's all to come to us.
I don't believe it, so that's why I said it's more, it's not negative anymore, it's just not there where.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking too.
Yeah.
Not, not ideal, but it's, there's not.
But I mean, in the infrastructure, which is, so.
Right. Okay. Well, I'm on board to say yes, you know, because it's got the AT.
All right, so.
I can sit here and check it all, so.
Right.
So then, you know, going out, obviously, we have the Shaner tracks here and a transitional zone, and, and maybe I'm talking a little bit more about zoning than I need to. But obviously, underlying zoning is here, so there were no suggested edits there. Some of this area is going to be in an institutional overlay zone or institutional zone if it's owned by Washington Lee. And essentially, from here back to here is owned by Washington Lee. Obviously, we've sort of followed the existing zoning in the area, the Mount Vista, Mount Vista area there. Then coming on around, I'm gonna turn off my zoning for this purpose. Uh, this is, this was done that essentially followed the residential zoning district in this area. Since that time, the the Board Supervisors, Planning Commission Board Supervisors went through the public process of downzoning a lot of this area from residential to agricultural. Not to say that, that it shouldn't be, you know, and and the real reason there is because the sewer water mor, sewer moratorium in the area, that is theoretically, knock on wood, a temporary moratorium. So didn't know what y'all thought about this area there, obviously, some, some existing residential development along Colliers Town Road, New Cameron Drive. And then this is predominantly agricultural with, of course, Modine and industrial zoning district.
Jim Brown's farm.
Mr. Brown's farm is gonna be located, I could turn on some parcel lines, is, is here.
But today, there's no public utilities out there, so it wouldn't be appropriate to change that now, right? Are you thinking, moving forward, there will be?
Moving forward, hopefully, I mean, I know we're, 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 I will say, constant to go, constant discussion, but, you know, Modine has expanded, we've made some allowances for, for new, maybe not new sewer connections per se, but certainly increase of of sewer services. You know, so, so maybe it's some, maybe there's some context, if you will, to have a buffer, you know, along Colliers Town Road and remove some of, some of this area as well. But I think that's largely contingent on the, on the sewer discussion, for sure.
Right.
Or we could keep this as is.
I think until we actually have utilities out there, I don't, I don't know how you can recommend that you change it, but I don't know.
There, there are utilities there, to be clear, it's just under the moratorium, and that could, that could be modified in the next five years, for sure.
So if somebody came to them and said, this is what we want to do here, they could lift it and say, okay, we're gonna let them do it.
It's, it's, it has to do with the I and I issues that City of Lexington has and a couple of different moving parts on, on essentially fixing some of the issues with the, with the car system and air system.
Eric Spencer's house is right there where you had that cursor, for a second.
Here is, yes.
Ask the question about that one more time, is that logically left yellow, or you said they're downzoning it now, so?
Well, they, so this, this original area was zoned residential, and I'm gonna turn off my, turn off my land use chapter layer and turn on the existing zoning. That is the existing zoning, so to be clear, what was zoned yellow was essentially this inner loop, zoned residential was this inner loop here consisting of 5, 600 acres, maybe even 700 acres, but that was downzoned. Well, to ag, and the dividing line at that time was, was around this location here. But then the individual property owners have come in for downzoning essentially because of lack of available water and sewer and land use taxation, I assume.
Right.
Recommendation, Chris, is to go back to that full loop?
Well, that's how it is currently, so the current, current land use chapter, that happened, I mean, even the current land use chapter was well after we did the downzoning of the property. And so that's what it essentially looks like now.
And so where are you proposing that we?
I really, you know, originally, I was thinking, you know, of of leaving a buffer zone, you know, somewhere along here, and, and, you know, it's hard to draw the exact line. But then, you know, it could be, I could, y'all could go either way, it's one, keep it as is, or or. It's one, keep it as is, or reduce the area size. I don't think, I don't think it'd be beneficial to increase the area size of this area. But, you know, you could, you could think about decreasing the area size.
That area is surrounded by developments.
I just think of that as more of a residential area, you know, I don't see it going, I mean, I always think Modine, you know, out there is kind of odd and out of place in the middle of all that residential, but.
Hate to say it's pretty cut up, there's a lot of parks in sale there in the last few years. Oh, I would not keep it the way it is.
That's my vote.
Talk about logical, it is logical.
All right, and I, I agree, I agree with that, consistent with the planning commission. Here, you know, we do have some business owner Route 11, zero water, well, sewer and water here. So one thing, you know, to consider is sort of the infill in this area as well.
I like that better, that makes more sense to me.
The infill.
Yes.
Okay. Then moving along to Borden Road, well, no, we sort of, we sort of reviewed that. Let me see what some of these are. Yeah, so that sort of follows existing easements and that, that area. All right, so moving on to Buena Vista, this is how we currently have the area in Buena Vista. You can see the transitional zone and you can see what we consider the suburban service area. Turn off my suburban service area there. You know, one thing, one thing we could do is, is essentially follow some of these parcel lines. And then, you know, pick up some of this development and then come back around this area there, if, if the commission.
You say that little sliver on the left side, I mean, that definitely seems like it ought to be included. And then it looks like it kind of has a natural boundary kind of to the northeast up there.
I will say, this is the landfill, this is the landfill parcel, this is landfill parcel, and this is the landfill parcel.
Right.
But that top portion, you could just fill it.
This is, this is not, you know, so certainly you could, you could come back around here and, and pick up some of, some of this area coming down Stony Run.
I like that, I mean, to me, that seems logical.
Keeping the landfill out, but after getting after landfill, continuing along the transitional zone, essentially fill it out through this line here, incorporating some of this and coming back around this way.
Yeah.
Okay. And then going to Goshen, Glasgow, we always include the, the corporate limits, if you will. I would suggest, well, these, these are, these are difficult parcels because it's in a grid system, obviously. But essentially, what we have going on now is it goes all the way to the Greenlee Bridge, falls into, to the Warfalkner area and then comes back around here. Going up here. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty appropriate coming through here. This is all under easement, is what it is, if you will. And then this, of course, is River Road coming out through there with some floodplain issues. So maybe keep, keeping this the as is.
I'm fine with that.
What's that?
I'm fine with that.
And then lastly, for the suburban service area, is it pretty much just follows the, the town limits. Which, you know, could be, could be worthwhile to explore going outside of the corporate limits. Obviously, this is national forest, is what it is. But you could very well, you know, want to follow the transitional zone in, in this area as well. Picking up some of these properties north of 39, essentially. And then coming back around here, following that and picking up some of the Stillwater properties.
And that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yep.
So next, we will go to the village service areas. And these are defined as, and I'll turn this off. Village service areas are defined as more remote village areas characterized by the presence of existing development, accommodating road networks, existing or proposed access to public water and public sewer. Rafeen, Fairfield, and Natural Bridge are determined to be such areas. The, the types of uses allowed would include mixed residential, retail offices, civic, public uses, park recreations, and limited small-scale industrial. New buildings should be similar in scale and compatibility with existing, existing buildings, such as suburban service areas. New projects within the service areas would be required to connect to public water and public sewer. And we're going to modify that, that language. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's, in, in some areas that, that you do have public water. And so looking at these suburban services, or excuse me, the village areas are going to be, Rafeen, or excuse me, we'll start to the south part of the county and move up. This was one large area here. I will say that this area has been modified significantly with the presence of the state national park. I'm going to turn off that layer. We have made a layer of the, the park holdings, if you will. And so that is what it currently looks like now. We, of course, will, will turn, I'm gonna turn this to green real quick, bear with me. You know, turn this into public lands, essentially that's the, owned by the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Conservation Recreation, I believe it is. So that is going to be public lands now. Oops, no, sorry. How do I do that? I apologize, there's two donuts in here that are not owned by the Natural Bridge, so I'm gonna recreate this real quickly. I think that's a better representation, sorry about that. All right, so that's a, I apologize, that's a better representation of what the, the Natural Bridge State Park consists of. This property here is still, these three properties here, here, and here are still privately owned. And so looking at, does still have influence on the existing village area. That was, has some of that state forest underneath of, oh, I'm sorry, state park underneath of it. So obviously, the state park would be pulled out, that would turn into public lands as we have on here, yeah, public land, we have it labeled as public land on the existing land use chapter. So that would change to, to, to public lands. And then what influence that has on the, the rural village areas. So I would foresee incorporating the, the private holdings in this area, as well as private holdings in this area. And didn't know if y'all thought, thought it was merit, and that's another, that's another bridge parcel here, sorry. That's going to be public lands as well here. Of just taking out the public lands and incorporating some of these smaller donuts, if you will, into the village area. And this is a good example, I mean, we say that the village service areas would be required to connect to public water and public sewer. This is excellent example, there's no public water, public sewer in there.
If available.
Yeah, if available, yes, that's, yes. And that's another thing, you know, while we're thinking about that, that's another thing that I thought about. We're going in hierarchy, the next one we have is a rural village area. And I always staff, I will, will, well, one, I have some comments on this when we get there. But also start thinking about, you know, would the fancy hill interchange be more acceptable as a, as a village area than a rural village area? Obviously, you have a presence of some existing businesses in the area. You have the presence of 81, 81 in the area with a, with a very active interchange. Unlike some of the other more rural, rural village areas. So one thing, one thing to consider would be, and I'll go ahead and talk about it, you know, we've always said this, this follows, this follows the existing area. Since we're sort of merging these together, the, the, this area and this area, as far as the discussion goes, it's essentially my recommendation, staff recommendation, if you will, is that we would remove this group of, this group right here of a rural village area follows pretty much verbatim, I'm gonna say, the existing zoning. It does, it follows the existing zoning. With that being said, which is business, with that being said, some of it is more conducive to business. Once you get on the west side of the interstate here, I, I think it's, one, incorrectly identified as a rural village area because of the underlying zoning district. You know, it's a, it's a fairly rural road with active farmland on both sides of the road and just not conducive to business. However, it's in a business zone. And while there's some other areas in, in the, in the area that might be more conducive to business zone, you know, going in this area, this is the existing convenience store, existing convenience store. In fact, the hotel you can see is in an agricultural zone and in a, in a rural area. So that's one thing, I think this is a, a good opportunity to essentially extend it around the hotel area here. I've always thought that this is an agricultural zone, but it's more conducive to business opportunity or business development than the west side of Tinkerville, for sure. Along 81, great visibility along 81, again, there's no public water and public sewer in this area, nor the Natural Bridge itself.
And I agree with it, once you go out on towards Tinkerville, right, I mean, that is out of your focus.
And to clarify, we're not tuning the underlying zoning, we're just changing stuff.
That could be the caveat, so it's very, that, that's a good point, as always. So, you know, one thing, it's easier, we've always said it's easier. Every landowner of Rockford County has the, the right essentially to make a rezoning application. And I think we're going to see some of this area based on some people getting removed from land use taxation because you're not supposed to be in land use taxation to begin with if you're not an agricultural piece of property. So we may start saying, in fact, we've talked to, talked to several many people, this property is for sale. Talked to less than a handful of people about rezoning, you know, rezoning from business to agricultural. Active farm, the, the active farm in the area farms it, you know, and so.
We have to wait for them to make an application, or can we say, that makes no sense there, we need to change that zoning?
We could have that opportunity when we modify the zoning map. Because it, what, what, it's my understanding, there has to be some sort of significant change for the county to initiate the zoning change. And so the significant change would be running public water and public sewer there, or a change of the comprehensive plan.
I think this is the time to do it, because that makes no sense there to me at all.
So do we all agree that, not, not the entire west side of the interstate, obviously, but, but essentially this side of Route 11, we're going to keep the, these in the area and hopefully expand upon it. But essentially, remove this and traveling north on the east side of the interstate.
Yeah.
Then as far as this goes, this is Safari, Safari Park is here. The KOA is here. And KOA also owns these three pieces of land there. So one, one idea could be, you know, running it along Broad Creek Church. And, well, one, do y'all think it's merit to change this? The first question I would have for, do y'all think it's merit to change this from a rural village area to a village area?
I do.
Yeah. So with that, we would change this from red to blue. And now knowing that, would you like to, you know, incorporate some other areas that are currently zoned agricultural into the village area? I think the, I think down here is a no-brainer, you know, incorporating the existing hotel. In fact, the business zone goes a little bit further than that. This is Mark Klein's here. Mark Klein's in, in Chana Castle, the, 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 Mark Klein's shop, if you will, is right here. Of course, this was old Williams Paint Booth, I think it is, with some commercial activity going on it. This is the hotel. So do y'all foresee, you know, coming, one, do we all agree that, that we'll incorporate this tract of land?
Yeah.
And it's?
I think we need to go all the way down past Marx, I mean, to that next piece to, you know, just make all of that.
Here? And then come back around and pick this up. This is under easement as well, this property is under easement, which has, has real life influence, I should say. So maybe incorporating this piece of property, coming back around here, coming on here, staying on this side of the road because of the easement. But then obviously incorporating the two gas stations into it.
Yes.
All right. And then, and then how about coming around Broad Creek Church Road, coming back around here?
I think that makes sense too.
So now, would you like to, would you like to have a disconnect between the two village areas that we're talking about? Or would you like to have some common connection between the two?
Where is the raceway located?
Right here, this is the, this is the racetrack right here.
There's a welding shop about halfway down.
I don't think they need to be connected, I think, I mean, that's pretty rural everything.
Yeah.
And there is some rural areas with, with some easements, go ahead and put that on there again. That shows the easement, so that could be the, that, that's the disconnect.
It may be very hard to connect those up.
I'd say don't do that.
Okay. So we would, we would take out the state forest, obviously, it's state park, excuse me, take that out and infill some of the, some of these other donuts that were left out in this area. I think I have clear direction in, in this area. So moving on, going to the other ones, so, no, excuse me, let's, Rafeen, I'm sorry, Fairfield. Would y'all like to expand? One opportunity I think we have is, One opportunity I think we have is, uh, is Ridge Road. Um, you know, as you know, we had a, we had the development proposed here, indoor recreational facility proposed here, that, that was the caveat to the zoning text amendment. Uh, is there, is there any, this is existing, in, is existing business zone, is there any merit? Pretty sure that's under easement. So, is there any merit to expand this to include the, uh, all of the industrial property here, which I think it is? Uh, go ahead and incorporate, well, that's public land, this is gonna be public land on the map, I believe. Uh, incorporate some of this area, sort of essentially following the, uh, transitional zone and incorporating some of the Alexander property in, into that. Obviously, there's a solar facility here for the next twenty years, twenty year lease with two, two tens, I think, uh, if I recall correctly, uh, but it, it could be some, could be some benefit a- as far as incorporating some of the Alexander property in there. And the existing business down below here, yes. Would y'all like to follow this transitional line around? Back around, pick up some of this parcel, if not all of this parcel? You know, pick up this parcel, uh, and then follow this line back along to Sterit? And then have a, have a solid buffer off of Ridge Road? You know, or really incorporate all of the McClung property here and then come back around there?
Do you guys think?
Looks good, but.
And we could, we, we'll draft this and, and we'll draft this and then bring it back to the planning commission, obviously. Uh, you know, the purpose of this is just to get some ideas.
Right.
Chris, it would be great to see your final revisions.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah, no, this is just, this is just talking out, and Hank and I, the G I S department and I sat down and we started doing this, I really thought I was getting ahead of myself. You know what I mean, I was like, hey, you know, I'm not the puppeteer here. Uh, let, let's take this to the planning commission, see if there's consensus here, map it out, then take it back to y'all.
I'm just curious, I mean, I, I love this kind of stuff, it's looking good. And you, uh, talked to other counties, what other county is similar to us?
Essentially, most of them, you mean as far as their hierarchy of, of categories or?
I mean, like Augusta County, we're not even close to that with the, the Fishersville and what they're doing. They're, they're, they've got a total different objective. Every time I go up there, there's a new house being built someplace.
Sure.
And, you know, they've got a whole different structure, their objectives are, uh, different. I can't imagine them not having a really big airport there sometime. But it just seems to me that we're more like the western counties than we are anything east of us. Maybe not over, you know, against the Carolina line, but I, I'm just curious because.
Like Allegheny County and that's correct.
Well, yeah, I agree, I mean, it's, it's, it's funny, because Rockbridge, it's ironic you say that, because Rockbridge is on sort of the southern part of some districts, Central Shandaua Valley Partnership. Uh, the northern part of the Roanoke area partnership, Central Shandaua Planning District is the same thing, we're on the southern end of that, so. And I really think it's, 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 it's one, historical growth patterns. Two, why was Rockbridge County created out of Augusta County? Uh, and then three, in the largest part, going back to the historical growth patterns, is gonna be the size of the valley. Uh, you know, the, the physical size of the valley, because obviously, once you get to Rafeen, Fairfield, Rafeen, the valley starts widening up significantly. And once you get to Augusta County, it just continues to, to grow and grow, grow as far as between the Alleghenies and the Blue Ridge. You know, the valley, once you get south of Fairfield, is a very combined valley.
When you get to the northern end of the Roanoke Valley, I mean, that's our weather and everything, you could talk with two wedges coming together.
Yes, I, I agree.
What I'm, look, looking at is, you know, down at the southwest, uh, you know, Pulaski, Lithville, they've all got these great designs, but the, the problem that they're, at least what I'm getting from them, they don't know which is gonna come first, the chicken or the egg. Uh, it's like healthcare, we're in between two huge centers of healthcare. Right? I mean, the Fishersville and, and, and Roanoke. And start looking at it and I think we've got to define, maybe really esoteric, whether we want people or we want businesses first. One comes, you can't do both at the same time.
Yeah, for a while, we were getting, basically becoming the bedroom community of Charlottesville, actually. You know, we were building a lot of houses for people that had gone from Charlottesville and then they came to, you know, Stanton there, you know, and they just keep moving west because they're trying to get away from that. They definitely, I think the same thing's coming, we're getting stuff, people are starting to come up. I'm doing a huge development in Buchanan right now.
Yeah, like our residents.
People that are working in Roanoke are living in Buchanan.
Sure.
And I think we're gonna get those people, so.
And we got, yes.
Right.
Right, we, we don't have affordable housing, our healthcare is, doctors aren't moving in, and we've got zero unemployment. I mean, they say two point five people, uh, percent, that's like the three homeless people that come into season's yield every morning. And I don't mean to be nasty or facetious, but, you know.
I do think you're right, we've got to decide who we want to be, I mean, we've got three big colleges, you know, two big, you know, three colleges here, you know, so we've got that, and I think that's the issue is, and, and the Realtors actually want to get together with planning commission and the supervisors to talk about, what can we do to help facilitate? There's money out there to do studies and figure out where, we've been talking about affordable housing as long as I've been on planning commission, which has been a long time and nothing ever changes.
Well, yeah, uh, we had a deal out at Kendall with, again, I don't want to waste time, but with city of Lexington coming out, Jim and Mayor Frank, and then Wesley and Spencer were out. Here's a statistic, when you look, look at it, the median age of Lexington, what do you think it is? Median age of Lexington.
It'll be, it's gonna be less than that because of the college influence.
Yeah, but those aren't full terms, I mean, do they count them?
Yes.
That, that, you know, Virginia's got this weird thing, if you, you got a street address, you can be a resident there, although you can't get in state. Twenty-two point four.
Wow.
And.
And, and that's solely because of colleges, if, if where you lay your head on this particular date of the six, sixty-five hundred people ballpark in Lexington, four thousand of them are twenty, twenty-two or under.
Yeah, forty-one percent are between eighteen and twenty-four. Median, uh, household income, sixty-six thousand. I mean, you look at that, when you look at the, you know, median and average, so you've got all these other people. And then for the county, we've got, uh, median age, eighty to forty-nine, keeps creeping up, which obviously the older people are living longer to do that. And the, uh, median household income, sixty-one thousand. So, you know, we, we just don't have workers here.
And I think about the places that it opened up, Chick-fil-A and, um, the Dunkin' Donuts, you know, I mean, I think it's been very hard, they've had to, I think, bring people in because they are struggling. I mean, they've had to close down a couple of days because they didn't have people to have it open, you know. I just don't know how we change that, you know, we keep wanting to expand business and all that kind of stuff, but we've gotta have a place for them to live.
And I, I think that's a large part of it, is the affordable housing part of it. And, and the, the only way, the, the one way, I should say, you're gonna get affordable housing is, is to find a developer, uh, that, that's, you know, in, in conjunction with the state and federal government. And we, we've talked on, we, we had a fairly positive conversation a month ago about a developer that deals directly with, with the, uh, housing authority. And, and, you know, it's a, it's a, if I recall correctly, it's a rental situation, but they own thousands of affordable housing units throughout the Commonwealth and, and only deal with.
But where are we gonna put those? Where are they gonna be? And we don't have public transportation to bring the people, you know, when, when you build a hundred, and I'm gonna say, let's just say you did it off a warm front, you know, you build a hundred whatever affordable housing units, how are they getting here, you know, is it, how are we gonna get them into town? Are there maybe hundreds more cars on the road? Or are we gonna really put some money into our sidewalks and public transportation?
I mean, I think this is a, a great comprehensive plan, it's better than any of the counties around us. And thank you very much, not there. And, but, you know, they've got more tools than we do, so they don't have to, you know, spend their time on words and hopes something hits.
Right.
And that, I mean, this is beautiful out, going out Route eleven, eleven, great plans, that's the way it should be. And same thing down at Natural Bridge, the, uh, I have friends who camp at the, uh, K O A down there. And they say it's one of the best in the east, best in the east.
Yeah, so I think you're right about what's our identity gonna be, you know, we said we want to be the outdoorsy, you know, we're all about the camping and the kayaking and the hiking.
The sun sets.
Right.
The sun rises.
Got off track there a little bit, but.
Oh, it's good discussion, I mean, it's good discussion.
Good to talk about the bigger picture of where we're headed.
And, and some of this has the record, direct influence on the comprehensive plan, obviously, you know, as far as where the, where, where these opportunities are. That's one thing that I thought, that I thought in the past, uh, where, where we could improve is not just follow the existing zone. You know, because in, in reality, we're gonna have to expand zoning and we're gonna have to expand these, these different categories in order to facilitate some of these projects, whether it's business or affordable housing that were, that were talked about. So, so back with this per- particular burden hand, uh, would y'all like to essentially, you know, this is, you can see the existing zoning underneath. Uh, and so we, we know we're gonna wrap around this area here, incorporate some of the Alexander parcel there, uh, slide over the interstate here, one, one dividing line is the, one dividing line could be the interstate, I'm sorry, the old railroad right of way here, I think it is. This is Huffman Lane extended, you know, it's historic single family neighborhoods. It's not gonna be redeveloped in, in, in our lifetime, but we do have an opportunity in this area. So what I'm thinking is sort of following the railroad along here, uh, maybe to this point, coming down and then following Ridge Road and then essentially going back to this point here. And that would give us, that would give us some of the existing, uh, more of the transitional zone in our, in our village area.
Great.
That.
I like that proposal.
Okay. And the best thing about this is it's on YouTube, so I could just give the G I S department the, the, uh, the link. Uh, going to Rafeen, uh, sort of the same thing, if you will, uh, as far as the rural areas go. You know, Rafeen is, is a, is a huge economic engine for us. Uh, we do have, uh, the village area that we're talking about is in blue. Um, you know, it, it is, it, it could be expanded. Uh, this is the existing industrial parcel, so it really does follow, essentially verbatim, follows the existing zoning in this area. Uh, so one thing I, there is some rural village here, which we haven't gotten to, but the rural village is here as well. Uh, so as far as the, as far as the availability, uh, and you do have some public lands over here. This is gonna be Virginia Tech Foundation anyway, Virginia Tech Foundation. Uh, this is county of Rockbridge, we would encourage that to be in a, in a village area. Uh, as, as far as for economic development purposes, that's why we bought the twenty-two acre tract there. Uh, but then this is, this is the McCormick Farm, actually owned by the university there. Um, so one thing I could foresee is not having this area as a rural area, not having this area as a rural area, uh, but maybe utilizing Morris Trail or Morris Creek itself for the dividing line and having this area go into the blue as well as some expansion on this side as well. Now, it could just be the, the, this is a, the essentially mirrored parcel on this side as this was on this side. You know, so we certainly could, could think about, again, incorporating some of this area in the blue and then some of this area in the blue as well.
Say, that seems like that makes a lot of sense to have the mirror on the other side of the road should be blue, I don't know why.
Essentially, it followed the existing zone. And I say that because if you turn off the village area, that's what you're looking at. So you can see, this is the only area that was agriculture transitional that was incorporated in the village area. So we could certainly expand it, you know, north of Morris Trail and then come back around here, mirror this area, then cor- incorporate back into these lines.
Yeah, I think that, that looks reasonable.
So those were our three blue areas. We, we recommended essentially mapping it out as four blue areas, which of course are the village areas. Now we're getting into the rural village areas, which are a little bit harder, in my opinion, to define. Uh, we'll start with Rafeen, I mean, Rafeen is a rural village area, I'm gonna turn off my underlying zoning there, and this is what, this is what we're talking about a- as far as, as far as it goes. You know, I, I would incorporate, going back to the blue, I don't, we're incorporate this liver, it's very limited development. This one, it might have more development potential there, but this would be blue. Another thing we're gonna do with this mapping is we're cutting out all the VDOT right of way or interstate interchange right of way. So you will have, you know, it's sort of a fallacy to have this area in the blue because it's interstate. Uh, so, so that will be, you know, identified as interstate, but then this liver will turn blue, this liver will turn blue as well as the other ones that we're talking about. But as far as the, as far as the rural village area, uh, goes, that's the way we have it currently. Get everyone warranted, that is gonna be the orchard, I, I'm sorry, that is going to be the vineyard here. So I really don't have much comment on that, you know, it does follow, it does somewhat follow the existing zoning in the area. Uh, you know, we certainly, you could talk about, you know, incorporating some of this area in it as well. Uh, going from, going from a rural village, I'm sorry, from a rural area to a village area, just for some, some expansion there. Think the vineyard's there, obviously the vineyard's gonna be there in a hundred years. But on this side of the road, might be able to incorporate some more additional land there.
I would say that makes sense to a- add those three parcels right there.
Sure, here.
And then, yeah.
All right.
And then with the blue, we've already talked about what you're gonna expand there.
Yes, and I don't think there's any in Rafeen, nope, the other ones we have, we'll go, we're, we'll go in the geographical areas. Uh, one is gonna be Vesuvius, that does follow the existing zoning to a certain extent. Uh, you can see, and I'm gonna turn off my, my area there. Uh, my underlying zoning, I should say, or no, I'm sorry, I'm gonna turn off the rural village layer. So that's what you're looking at, again, yellow's residential, white is agricultural and red is business. And so we do have, we do have some buffer along South River Road for the rural village area as well as some of this area o- over here, that's, it's currently zoned agricultural, I should say. But if y'all wanna leave that the way it is, there is some future growth there. And that one's a little bit easier, these two, I should say, that Vesuvius is a little bit easier and Rafeen is a little bit easier from the existing zoning, because then you get into the smaller areas. Let's say Brownsburg, for example, um, this is the current layout for Brownsburg. Uh, and so it does follow the existing zoning, except for, I think this is the New Hall property. You know, it may be beneficial to, to incorporate some of that into the, into the rural village area.
What is that one little piece up at the top?
Where's that?
At the top, you know, I guess, that northeast.
This one here?
No, the straight, a little bit further to the right there, see that one little white one at the, yeah.
Uh, that is, that's on the corner, that's the north side of Hayes Creek Road. It's actually for sale as we, or was for sale for, for some time last year, I'm not sure.
Wonder why it wasn't included in there.
I think it goes back to the existing zoning, but we certainly could, could expand that. Yeah, weirdly enough, there's some, some right here in the middle, I'm not sure, I think that was just a mapping error. Uh, and we can cer- and certainly incorporate those into the, into the village areas. Uh, and we can cer- and certainly incorporate those into the, into the village areas as well.
And the yellow one you said is what?
Resident, it's owned by New Hall, gentleman named Jonathan New Hall. Um, but it's an old school property. It's owned residential.
So it wouldn't be included in the village?
You, you could. I mean, I think it's, in my opinion, it's technically in the village. Yes.
I would say it's in the village, but it needs to be.
Right.
Yeah.
I think both of those need to be part of the village.
Here and here. All right. So then, and those, those, those three, and I'll probably say those four, after I get to the next one, are a little bit easier because of the zoning. Uh, Rockbridge Baths, you know, where, where Brownsburg is, is easier to map. I said that during a community meeting in Brownsburg, you know, because of the existing zoning. Where Cars Creek is, is a little bit difficult, you know, because the start and stop point of Cars Creek. I think Cars Creek is a much larger area than, than the pinpoint on, on the map that is actually Cars Creek. And same thing with Rockbridge Baths. Uh, this is how we have the existing Rockbridge Baths, uh, rural village area. I would, I would suggest, you know, at, at minimum incorporating the fire, volunteer fire department there. Uh, and then maybe, maybe essentially, you know, cleaning up some of these lines to go down to, to essentially the river or some property lines in those cases.
Yeah, I think that would make sense to go down to the river because.
Let me put on the river just so I know. Yep, I'm with you. Maybe.
Take it through the firehouse.
Boom.
Drop it down.
Yep. Like this area there. Cause I do think, I mean, I think, I think once you go past, uh, essentially Turkey Hill intersection. I would, I would include this in Rockbridge Baths.
Yeah, I think once you make that switchback turn, it's, you're in Rockbridge Baths.
And maybe just follow the river up to this point and just clean up that sliver there. Have a good buffer along the road, if you will, incorporating back around there. So the other one that we have, other ones, I should say, cause I know there's several of them. Uh, we've gone through four so far. Uh, Colliers Town's one we looked at. Uh, this is Cars Creek. So Cars Creek proper is going to be located uh, essentially right here. That's the name Cars Creek. That's where it is. So the, where we have it, uh, you know, it incorporates Big Spring or incorporates some of the Big Spring property incorporates Highland Bell, which is now B A R C, obviously. Um, I will say that, you know, the, the floodplain, we really haven't gotten into much floodplain discussion so far. But that's going to be the floodplain and that may have been the benefit of keeping on the north side of West Midland Trail, going up the Miller's Mill, slightly past Miller's Mill, I should say, and then coming back around this side.
How is it on the right side of Big Spring Road right there?
Here.
The, the right side, the down south. Yeah.
Maybe Cars Creek General Store. You know, that obviously was at one point a, a, a community hub. Uh, Cars Creek General Store was located 2620, actually 2602. Uh, I think this is going to be the Mulch Yard address there, and that's a single family level.
Yeah, I just, I guess I don't think about that as being Cars Creek at all. That side of the road, I don't know. I mean, as far as the.
I sort of think it's funny because I had this discussion with my, with my two daughters in the car, you know, where based on this discussion, you know, land use chapter, where's Cars Creek stop and start, you know? And I sort of think, I mean, and this is just my personal opinion, living in the area. You know, after you get past, where does Lexington stop and Cars Creek start, you know? In my opinion, it's somewhere around gravel hill, you know, you know, going out that way, that, that, that one gravel hill, then you start going down. And so, you know, I would definitely consider the, the Cars Creek store as, as part of Cars Creek. Well, one, because Cars Creek, that's where Cars Creek goes under West Midland Trail. Uh, and then, and then just the, the remembering the Cars Creek store. And we're always encouraging of, of country stores opening back up, but we've had limited success. Of course, as you know, uh, Mr. Hart is, is talking about doing a community, uh, a country store with a restaurant. And I will tell you, I failed to advertise, so that's not going to be on the public hearing. I apologize, uh, coming up. But it will be on the following month. Um, but.
I really wanted the 60 West store to take off, you know, that's not too far from my place.
Yeah.
And it did for a little bit, but now.
Yep. Old Kelly's Corner. You know what I mean? But then that's an interesting question. Like, is Kelly's Corner in Cars Creek? I don't think it is. You know, I, I never thought of it being.
I think I live in Cars Creek, but I don't think, I mean, Cars Creek to me is everything that's right around the fire department and down that way more than it is.
I agree. Like, and that's the continental divide of where it is. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we go, you know, to, to gravel hill in this area and say, okay, well, that's all the village service area, but just geographically.
Village service. I mean, it's really around the fire department and the stores, you know, like any of that little stuff right there. But I wish, I mean, that store has not been open as long as that.
Yeah. I mean, it's been, it's been closed for a solid 20. I had a buddy that reopened it probably 18 years ago for a short stint. Very short. It was short. Yeah.
So is there any thought that you need to expand that at all? Are we okay?
No, I mean, it's, again, I'm just here to guide the discussion, if you will, facilitate the discussion. Um, you know, you do have some floodplain there, uh, but, but, you know, you may agree with the way it's currently mapped.
Clean up some of those lines a little bit.
Yeah.
On that south left side.
Okay. And so the other harder one, if you will, because I'm not, I mean, I'm familiar with that, spent a lot of time out there, but you're, we're going to Colliers Town now. Uh, and so Colliers Town is going to be two-fold. So rural village areas defined as those typically call stroke communities characterized presence of a post office or country store and core houses on small lots, public and sewer water, not to be expected in theirs in their future, but may be desirable. Brownsburg, we looked at. Rockbridge Baths, we looked at. Steel's Tavern, we haven't, which I need to. Vesuvius, we did. Cars Creek, Colliers Town, Effingor, Cornwall, Arnold's Valley and Fancy Hill. Of course Fancy Hill, we took from a rural village area and put it in a village area. So these two we're looking at here, uh, this is going to be, uh, this is going to be Colliers Town itself.
And that would be where the old elementary school is and the, and the fire department.
Well, that is actually going to be Effingor, which is right here. We could start with Effingor. Effingor is located here. This is going to be the Cars, I'm sorry, Effingor Fire Department. The old school, which is now the school county administration.
Effingor is different.
Effingor and Colliers Town, according to our mapping, according to the language, yes. Uh, but I consider Effingor being part of Colliers Town, obviously. But we do have them divided. This is going to be the old, the old, old schoolhouse here. And then, uh, the, the presence, no, the church is on the other side. Sorry. So this is, this is the way we have it currently. I'm not saying that needs to be expanded or subtracted from as far as Effingor goes. The, you know, we have the county administrat-, I'm sorry, the school administration building there. We have the volunteer fire department here. Uh, with some areas to, to grow. So moving on to actual Colliers Town, which we identify as Colliers Town. Uh, that is here.
Where that little store is off to the left that I think was.
Center block stores, open, closed, apartments above it.
No, it's not. So the store is actually located. This is going to be the Presbyterian, I'm sorry, I think this is Presbyterian. This is Methodist. Uh, the store, I'm trying to think of where this is Carriage Town Presbyterian. That's the Methodist. Is this another Presbyterian or that, or Baptist? That's the Baptist. Baptist, Methodist, Presbyterian. The actual church, or I'm sorry, the actual, it's a three. Yeah. So the store is actually. Right here. I'm sorry. The store was on the other one. The store, this is the duplex across the street. 3003 was the old store.
There's another store.
That's right. That's right. So the other store, uh, is going to be located. Right. Would it, it might be 20. Might be 2957. Uh, let me turn around here. Yep. That's, that's the old, that's the old store that, that is now. No, I'm sorry. That's right. That's the old store with the center block, black with the, with the center block. We had gas pumps in front of it. The other one was the Klimmer store essentially.
That's right. I think that one's got apartments upstairs.
It does. Yes. And as far as where, to, so we're all oriented, this is where the existing rural village area is.
Have no reason to change something like that up there.
No, I agree.
So again, we've done Brownsburg, Rockbridge Baths, Steel's Tavern. We're going to come back to Vesuvius, Cars Creek. We've done Carriage Town, Effingor, Cornwall, Arnold's Valley. Let's go to Cornwall, Arnold's Valley. And don't let me forget to go back to Steel's, Steel's Tavern. So both Arnold's Valley and Cornwall are large areas, if you will. Or Arnold's Valley, I'm sorry, Cornwall's going to be in, in, uh, this is how we have Arnold's Valley now. Uh, located here. The only thing I would suggest, this did follow zoning. Of course, since then, the Panda Bakers bought the, the, um, old juvenile detention center. So, you know, it would make sense to me that if we expanded that area to incor- incorporate that holding.
Yeah.
In that area. But then go back to rural area down here. So then lastly, well, any other comments on this before I punch you wrong? So lastly, Cornwall, uh, is going to be located here. That's community in, in, uh, the, uh, Cornwall community in South River. And so it's, it's, uh, again, there was a, there was an old store there, South River, not South River Market, but there was another South River store. I can't remember what was located, uh, along one of these. I can't remember exactly which one it was, but it was located here. Uh, but it does go up White's Gap a little bit. Uh, so, and, and White's Gap is a, is a, is a gravel road. So, you know, it may be, it may be, might be considered to, to, well, let me find out where Cornwall proper is. Cornwall is right here. This is all county owned property here. 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 And here. And probably here as well. Yep. All that's county owned property. So it's very, it's deed restricted. Significantly deed restricted. That was part of the FEMA, FEMA buyout program after Isabel. Uh, FEMA had a, a voluntary purchase and those purchases were turned over to the county with deed restrictions of open space uses essentially. Some modifications could be made, but open space uses. So if anything, you know, you know, we could use, uh, the, the continental divide of this floodplain and remove this portion if, if y'all see fit. Knowing that that's a dead end gravel road.
Yeah, I agree. The gravel road that goes to nowhere probably doesn't need to be in there.
All right. We, we can work on that. And that would be essentially utilizing the, the river or the tributary in that case, uh, to the South River coming up around here, making that, that modification. So lastly, we have, while we have this listed, there's, uh, sorry, uh, Steel's Fort is located here. Uh, we have it identified in lec- text as a rural village area, but it was not mapped accordingly. Uh, and so we can work on the mapping. There's of course midway, there are some businesses, existing post offices in this area. Uh, there's a, there's a midway, I think the only, only active business is the auto parts in that area. Uh, and, and so, you know, we, we could use, utilize that existing area there and then incorporate some of the, uh, Tomnello parcel in that as well. And sort of just make the, the eye, if you will, uh, of the, of the rural village area, the intersection of Rafeen Road and Route 11. And just work on the mapping, you know, incorporate the existing businesses and some of the existing vacant property in there.
Use the national, you know, roads and rivers and, you know, to cover the boundary lines for that.
Yes.
Augusta County have on their side of Steel's Tavern. Do you know?
What's that? I do not know. I do not know how, how, how they categorize it. It's hard landing. All right. So that, that goes over, what else we have? We had the rural village area. Oh, the interstate interchanges. So, uh, we do have interstate interchanges, uh, identified on the mapping. And in some cases, there's only one that, that is the outlier, if you will. And I say that, I'm going to turn on my interstate interchanges. Uh, all interstate interchanges are not the same in Rockbridge County. We have some with, with a lot of development. We have some with zero development. And that goes back to where public water and public sewer is and, and more particularly where it's not. So they, they are currently the interstate interchanges, uh, so interstate interchange, land use designation, any associated development standards would apply to Rafeen. I'm going to turn on as I'm talking. Uh, Rafeen, you can see there. And I'll go to each one. Uh, exit 205, of course, exit 200. Timber Ridge, which we made modifications to, proposed modifications. Lexington, which we've talked about there. In fact, all of that was the, that was already in there. Uh, and 81 and Lexington and Buena Vista. So this area here. So going back to these, I'm not so sure how needed, that they're all have existing land use designations other than a rural area. Except for the 188 exit. So we can do two, two things. One, we can keep the status quo and keeping that language in there, which it's, uh, this is Route 60 East. Yes.
Any plans to get that water out there? Where does that stand?
Well, so there's no immediate plans for water out there. I will say we, we recently, five years ago, recently, maybe something like three to five years ago. We, we, uh, did a project in the East Midland Trail and created a new pump station behind Taco Bell. And essentially, and the purpose of all that was to bypass the city system. That part was under a moratorium as well. You know, a- as far as sewer war moratorium as well. And so we had some viable commercial projects out there uh, that, that were not viable because of the lack of public water, public sewer. So direct result of that project, in my opinion, direct result of the project, we're seeing the hotel under construction now. We're seeing the proposed Wawa coming through the pipeline as we speak, you know, those type of things. So going back to the, to the suburban area, you know, it could be, it could be beneficial that we extend the suburban service area to this interchange and just get a, be done with the interstate interchanges. Because you do have some interstate interchanges such as Cars Creek, uh, you know, the southern part of the county, Goshen. You know, those type of areas that are not going to be anywhere near public water, public sewer, anything like that. So this is the only one, this is the only one on the map that is considered a, surrounded by a rural area. You know what I mean? by a rural area, you know what I mean, which is, which is not so conducive to, to develop. With that being said, going back to your question Tom, I never fully answered it, we, we oversize the pump station and the, and the pipes going there with anticipation of extending water and sewer someday, you know, or have the, it, it, it's easier after we oversized everything because we weren't designing it just for essentially the Rip Mac Shopping Center, Rip Mac Shopping Center back to Lexington. So that's one thing to consider, and here, the suburban service area really should incorporate at minimum, you know, the, the shopping center in that area and some of this industrial zoning district even though it's a quarry. But it could be, it could be that we incorporate some of this sliver, and I'm not a big proponent of the sliver, but it's mapped there, but we could incorporate this, we could extend the suburban service area to follow the, some of the existing zoning, incorporate some of this existing business zone in the area. I will say unfortunately, the majority, that there, there's a good chunk that's associated with the interstate interchange land use designation, so we're losing a lot of text, but that text is somewhat redundant because it's, you almost think of it as a overlay, you know? And it goes on to say, "The Fancy Hill and the Carsh Creek interchanges would be treated as rural village areas as previously discussed while further expansion of the natural bridge interstate is not recommended." So I think that's, I'll leave, I'll leave it at that.
Designation referred to as we wanted to, says development is likely.
Rural villages is a crossroad community essentially, characterized by the presence of post office or, and so page 240, presence of a post office, country store, core houses on small lots, public sewer and water would not be expected in these areas in the future but may be desirable. And then it goes on to say Brownsburg, Rockbridge Bass, Steel's Tavern, Vesuvius, da-da-da-da, all those are considered rural village areas. So I don't think that considering, you know, just because the interstate presence, that we go, that Carsh Creek and Carsh Creek and Fancy Hill, especially Fancy Hill, would be considered a rural village area. That goes back to the, we changed it from, we're proposing to change it from rural village area to village area.
I'm sorry Chris, I'm a little confused. Weren't you considering that area as a suburban service area?
Where's that?
As you have up on the map.
Yes, no, that, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, that's the existing language, so if we went to a suburban service area, that would be paged.
Yeah, I got that, okay, 239, but that's where that's headed, that whole corridor. Isn't that logical, is that what we're?
It seems to make sense to me, but do we have public utilities out there or do you think we could have potentially public utilities out there because we planned and put in bigger pipes and all that stuff, is that, is that what you were saying?
How far outward looking is this? If we're five, 10, 20 years out there with this comprehensive plan, at least five years?
At least five years, yes, and then we have to revisit it, review is what the state code says every five years. And so the existing, as far as distance goes, the existing public water and public sewer to this side of the interstate is about less than a mile and a half, eh, hold on, yeah, 6,900 feet.
This is a forward-looking document, shouldn't we call that a service?
I would say.
So, and just do away with the language of the, of the interstate interchange, because again, this is the sort of the elephant in the room because all the other ones are, have that underlying, underlying designation except for this one.
I don't think we need it, I think we call it, we got rid of the interchange there.
And so looking at that mapping, you know, I'm not saying that, that, you know, maybe, maybe we'll follow this, this corridor, and to be clear, you know, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not suggesting that we, I've always had the concern of rather than new construction, we'll see new construction, I mean, if you run public water and public out there, you're gonna see new construction, but whether that's gonna be a displacement of current services or actually something that adds to the, to the revenue source is one thing. Obviously, in my opinion, if we had water and sewer out here, the residents in would not be adjacent to the Lexington, the Wawa would be closer to this interstate interchange, the, would McDonald's done the revamp of their store there or would they start looking at, okay, well, why don't we just, you know, go further out here that we're closer to our, to our core business which is the interstate, you know, type thing, in certain circumstances. But with that, getting that off my chest if you will, another thing that concerns me about this is obviously historic growth patterns going back to August and everything else is going with the grain and this is going against the grain of the valley, I should say, you know, that, that's why you have a sheer rock bluff on, on one side and, you know, less than conducive topography on, on a couple areas. But I do think that, I'm not saying that this is, I'm certainly not saying that this is a rural area and always will be a rural area because I think there is some, I don't think, I know there's some development pressure there. So maybe we would look at not incorporating, you know, incorporating some of this business zone but not all of the business zone in our suburban service area. Same to be true with the industrial zone there as well. But we could work on that mapping, come up with something and present it at the planning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be great.
And then we'll look at the, what that actually does to the, to the interstate interchange language, you know, because obviously we have to have some, something, a very strong presence of interstate interchange language in there, but I'm not so sure it's just this circle, you know, I, I mean, I, yeah, this circle or the other four or five circles So I think that wraps up the mapping part of it. Do you have our proposed, we would like to talk to you about community meetings as well. I know we were, our goal was to keep this to two, two and a half hours, but with that being said, I would like to talk about the community meetings, what we had, what we as staff has talked about is doing, essentially, we looked at the mapping and I can pull it up if needed, but we looked at the mapping and said, okay, well, where are our geographical regions that we want to do, obviously five magisterial districts, we started thinking about, okay, well, maybe we could split these magisterial districts, but it comes down to geographically, I think we're gonna do five community meetings, and this is just community meetings, they're not public hearings, we're required to have a public hearing to adopt the ordinance or to adopt the comprehensive plan, but what we're thinking about is in the natural bridge, we've utilized natural bridge, volunteer fire department before, in South River, we, we've utilized the South River Volunteer Fire Department or Rafine Rescue Squad, we haven't utilized Rafine Rescue Squad because it's brand new, but both of those are geographically situated on Route 11, one north, one south obviously. Carsh Creek, we use New Mammoth Church or the Carsh Creek Volunteer Fire Department, New Mammoth is sort of better situated for presentations, they have a, you know, a room that's utilized for this type of Ruins Hold a Club meeting there, that type of thing. Buffalo, we were thinking the Palmer Community Center and Walfrid Creek, we were thinking Goshen Town Hall or the fire department. So didn't know, you know, with y'all, knowing the areas better than I do, what y'all were thinking about as far as the respective districts.
Walfrid Creek would be great at the Rockbridge Bass Firehouse, a little better than Goshen maybe?
Yeah, that's a pleasure. I mean, that's a lot of the concentrate that you've been talking about.
Okay.
If it's available.
I mean, Fairfield's fine because, that's where, I mean, it's on a.
South River.
Yeah, South River.
Both of them are stone so far.
Yeah, I mean.
So we were thinking about, and I'm not, I'm not trying to get y'all, I mean, I would love to have, we're, I'm not trying to coordinate y'all's schedule with these meetings, I think it's just gonna be too, too, too many moving parts if you will, I'm not anticipating all planning commission members going to all, it would be great if the planning commission, if y'all could go to your respective districts, obviously, we'll let you know when they are and also do the, we're obviously inviting the district supervisor as well, but historically that's what's happened, planning commission representative, supervisor, staff will go there and essentially explain the existing zoning, these changes that we're talking about and just, you know, sort of a open forum if you will, with the, and so I'm hoping we can set the dates because it's coming down to August, August 1st is tomorrow, hopefully we can start setting these dates and I might even have some dates for y'all, dates and times at the next planning commission. But, but I wanted to throw these out to y'all as the, you know, the representatives, see if we're on track. Buffalo, I really can't think of, of anywhere else in Buffalo, you know, you go out there, that's, I don't know if we utilized the Palmer Community Center in the past, but obviously they have the, the ice cream supper there and everything else.
Your firehouse is fantastic for events, if that's in the Buffalo District, I assume it is.
One's in, well, so funny enough, and I'm about to tell you, one, one side of the road is Carsh Creek, one side's Buffalo, so let's see.
It's, it's on the, it's on the car.
It'd be, the, the fire department would be the Carsh Creek side, the, the school building, which is, if we got down to the school administration building, that might be beneficial, it's only cuss, but it's still the fairly rural area.
Great use of all the bridges.
Okay.
It's a good facility.
You, no one has a contact, anybody have, I can get that, but.
Just the Kermit.
Pocket?
He passed away.
Okay, yeah.
I can find out for you.
Okay, that'd be great. Yep.
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, I'm just worried about forgetting, I'm making that to myself.
What are you thinking about this? Because obviously, you know, the summer, everybody's busy here, there and everywhere, I think the sooner we get dates out, the better.
I'm thinking essentially, man, it's hard to say, May or May, May, early June, you know, something like that.
I think before people start taking off, you know, for the summer, you know, once kids get out of school and stuff, I think it's just really hard to.
Yeah, and it might, we'll do it as soon as possible essentially. It's a perfect storm, you know, as, as we talked about at the planning commission, we're, we're essentially trying to wrap up the solar committee, I'm thinking we're gonna have one more meeting on the solar committee than a joint work session with the board, planning commission and, and the solar committee at a, at a board meeting work session, the day of the board meeting, so that's gonna wrap up, this has to wrap up, but it's just, you know, it's, it's essentially the comprehensive plan update, the solar committee update on top of all the other normal day-to-day activities, let's put it that way. So we will do our best to have some dates, firm dates and times at the next planning commission.
You like to have our vacation dates in your folder, do you think that or not?
Yeah, I mean, if.
Complicated thing.
I was gonna say, I mean, I just, I worry that, you know, we're talking about waiting till the next planning commission, what day, I mean, is that like the 8th of May or something? I mean, it's, we're like already into May.
Well, it would be, I mean, if we can do them in May, we will do our best to do them in May, and I'm thinking like two a week is what I'm thinking of going on road shows.
I was just thinking, maybe that's something where we need to do that by email, you know, we don't, I don't think we need to wait till we come back, you know, and talk about dates, I think we ought to have that.
Yeah, and a lot of this is gonna be depending on when we can get these buildings obviously, so we can start, we'll start that immediately, essentially, we'll start immediately. I mean, I wanted, we, we need something, same thing as the solar committee, I wanted to have a draft for discussion purposes, and, and that, that's exactly what we're doing here, is okay, we can, I think, I think the GIS department will be able to update these mappings next week, you know, have it done essentially next week, the following week at the absolute latest and, and then, but we're not gonna wait on that until we make these, we'll get some dates on the map and either share this with you prior to the planning commission or at the planning commission.
All right. Anything else for us?
I don't believe so. I think that, that was the majority of, the mapping was the majority of it, I do want y'all to look at the language, we've started pulling out other chapters, other, other localities, and I think there's some, some fairly significant text that will, will come up, we'll put this back on the agenda, you know, obviously we haven't looked, looked at the goals and objectives, you know, but, but we'll put this back up on the, on the agenda for the regular scheduled meeting. We do have three public hearings associated with the Dominion Lay Down Yard on the Holland property on Ralph River Road, they, they, their timeframe has been extended because of logistics and so they're coming back through to ask for additional time, associating, amending the condition associated with the existing timeframe, and for Adam and, and Tom, y'all weren't on here, it's the Holland, the Dominion Power is using the Holland property, if I recall correctly, it's 66 some odd acres, 50, 60 acres on River Road, the non-river side of River Road for three special exceptions. One, a public utility lay down yard in agricultural zoning districts used by special exception. Two, a heliport that they're gonna use a helicopter to, to take out old material and put in new along the Forest Service, they've worked with the Forest Service and, you know, for the lack of road construction, all that stuff, they're gonna utilize helicopters, and then the third one was public utilities, heliport, and then, oh, use in the floodway, it is in the floodway, thankfully it's a temporary use with, with limited operation as far as timeframe, and so we, the board granted them three special exceptions, all three special exceptions had a time implementation and completion date, they've been delayed and so they're coming back through to modify that. So we have three public hearings in, in, in our next meeting, I apologize because I did fail to get that zoning text amendment, I'll have to call Mr. Hart and tell him that, but I got my date screwed up, I hate to say it, it was Tuesday of this week, I had on my calendar to advertise it Friday, planning commission and board, because the board is on the second Monday of the month, but the, the, the second Wednesday of the month falls during the first week. So anyway, it was logistics there and I, I just messed up and I was able to get the late, I got in the special exception for Dominion and then like literally two hours later, I was sitting there racking my brain, I was like, oh, I didn't advertise the zoning text amendment. Long story short, we have a relatively light agenda, and so we will go ahead and put the land use chapter back on there and we'll continue the conversation about the text, we could review the mapping hopefully and talk about public meetings and go from there.
Can we make a motion?
To adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all favor, and we're adjourned. Thank you.